AGP just gave me the signal that we're live and ready to go. So if I could have everybody's attention for a moment, we'll make some brief announcements and welcome, and we'll get started. Okay, y'all ready to go? All right, well, welcome. So today is our workshop forum for goals, and it's got a different mixture of processes. Ikani, our deputy city manager, is going to open with and discuss kind of the process and the tables and assignments and what we'd all like to participate in tonight. But for me, I just want to say welcome. I'm glad to see as many folks come out tonight. We get the opportunity to discuss what our goals are for 16, 17, 17, 18 fiscal years, and everything you see up on the wall, we'll be able to discuss tonight. If there's any other concerns or items that you want to discuss, now's the opportunity to do that as well. So this is what it's all about. It's about folks in the community coming out, giving us their input on what the goals for the city should be. So with that, once again, I just want to say welcome. We do, one of the official parts of this, we do have a quorum, so all of our council members are here, and so we'll call the meeting to order, then we'll start our workshop, and then I'll turn it over to Ikani, and then he'll go through kind of the formalities of processes and some objectives for tonight. So welcome, everybody.
Yeah, I didn't introduce all the council members, but maybe we can do that. Maybe we just kind of, I didn't do that.
All right. Thank you, everybody. My name is Ikani Tamopé. I'm the deputy city manager here in Morro Bay. Very excited. Before anything, as you know, Mayor Jamie Irons just got off the mic, but we do want to introduce the city council members who are here. We have Marlis McPherson with us today. We have Matt with us here today, right here. Red Davis, right behind me. John Heding, how could I forget? John Heding, there you are. All right. So, and also, I'll go over staff and I'll go over the tables, but we're very excited to have you here. I'm seeing people already putting stickers on, and I haven't seen so many stickers go up since kindergarten, and it's exciting to see that. What we wanted to do today was, what actually city council wanted to do, was part of this annual goal-setting process, we wanted to invite the public to come out outside of a city council meeting, keep it informal. So open house setting, that's why you're here today. Discussion, dialogue, talking, listening, that's what we want today, and we appreciate you showing up. What a great turnout. So round of applause to you today out there. Thank you for coming. This is really what we want. And we really appreciate that, because it takes a lot of time from staff and city council to plan this, so we're very grateful. The reason why we put this together again was to have this informal process as opposed to coming up three minutes, and next. We want this to have discussion, dialogue, and tell us what's important to you, what are priorities, and what's important and what's not important to you. And that's what the stickers are for. So three objectives from this meeting that we want you to go home, understanding what the objective was. You come in, discussion, interaction is number one. Number two, there are stickers. What these stickers mean, the significance of the sticker is, green means good, red means not so good. If you feel strong, strongly about a goal or objective, please put a green sticker. If you feel strongly against a goal or objective that you'll see at these goals and objectives, please put a red sticker. If you don't feel strongly one way or the other, we invite you not to put a sticker on. We really want this to be, we love stickers, but we just don't want people to go crazy on stickers. So I guess what we're saying is only you're passionate about it. That'll help us in this goal-setting process, really determine what the community feels passionate about. Now, the third reason for this open house setting is, you may perhaps see some goals and objectives that are not on the wall, not on the table. You see something that you've been thinking about, that you've always been passionate about. There are posted notes on each of the tables, and we want you to write and give it and submit it to the staff and city council member, and let them know what that posted note means to you and why it should be on the wall. Now, going over the process, I'm going to go to my right and starting with goal number one. At table number one, that will be goal number one, which is economic and fiscal sustainability, with John Heding, Craig, our finance director, myself, and Jen Little with the tourism manager. So that will be economic, goal number one, which is achieve economic and fiscal sustainability. Basically, what that means is that's goal number one, because you need money to function. As of January 2017, the city, the city has about 25% gap in general fund revenues. Goal number one is, how do we approach this gap? What can we do creatively to get more revenues into our general fund? Incentives, TOT rebates, public-private partnerships, possible economic development opportunities out there? That's what goal number one is all about. So we invite you to go to goal number one, two, three, and four. At each of these tables, you'll have a goal, and then with this goal, you'll have the duration, which means the time. And the duration of the, of goal number one is eight-year goal, so by eight years, the hope is by 2025, we'll, we'll be fiscal, we'll be there economic and physically sustainable as a city. Now, that doesn't mean that eight years, we're going to wait for eight years. What that means is, there's up to eight years. So each year, we hope to see bit by bit increments in achieving that 25% gap. So put your stickers on those objectives. Go to those goals, go to the objectives. If you agree, again, green sticker. If you don't agree, red sticker. Again, if you're strong and you're passionate, one way or the other. Goal number two, we have complete the Wharf project and One Water program. So this is goal number two. Basically, what this is, as we know, the water reclamation facility is a very big project in our city, and so that's why we have the task of this very big responsibility on Rob and Marlis to talk about what goal number two is. It's basically, this goal is finish, complete as affordably and efficiently as possible the water reclamation facility, and while doing that, implementing a water resource program that will help our city's future with water and being even more sustainable than ever. So this is part of that. And again, there's goals, there's objectives. Put the stickers on the wall, talk to them if you have any questions, and if you don't see anything that should be there, get a posted note and post it and submit it to Marlis or Rob. Over here at goal number three, to my right, we have improve infrastructure and public spaces. Basically, in a nutshell, what this goal is all about is anything that has to do with streets, with bikes, pedestrians, parking lot infrastructure, buildings, anything, public spaces, beautification of public spaces, public, public infrastructure and spaces, this is the goal. As we know, I got to say, every email that has come in, you can't say every or all, but streets is very popular. I just moved here in October, and I got to say, everyone is saying we need to do something about our streets. So you learn that very quick. There we go. Round of applause for streets, if you want it. There we go. We don't need stickers for streets. But anyways, let them know. Matt and Rick are here. Talk about your streets and anything related to the multimodal transportation. Okay, over here, we have goal number four. This is review and update significant city land, city land use plans. This is basically the rewrite, the update of the general plan and the local coastal plan. These are the plans. If you like planning, this is, this is the goal to come to and talk to them. Again, stickers, put it on the objectives that you're passionate or not passionate about, or string for or against. And again, obviously, posted notes if there's something else that you have in mind for plans. At our last corner, this is, seems to be the most popular one so far, this is our mission statement corner, and also the comments that have been submitted in multicolor paper on the wall. So what mission statement is all about, staff, city council, we're looking for what our statement is. We have a tentative mission statement on the wall. If you know about mission statements and you have effective mission statements, look at this on the wall, tell us if, if you care or not about it, and give us what you think our mission statement should be. In addition to that, on the wall, looks like it's already happening, these are, these are the emails that have been submitted on Facebook or, or any emails to our city recorder. This is basically, all the emails clustered the best, best we could in different categories. So if you, if you're for it or against it, again, use stickers, tell us, help us understand what it means to you. Lastly, I'm almost done, just 10 more seconds. This will go until 7:30 or 8 o'clock. At that time, if you're still here, we're going to conclude, and we're going to go over each table with each city council member and staff, and they're going to tell us what the discussion and dialogue was all about. So at that time, we'll have AGP going live and recording each table, and so there will be some closure. We'll have conclusion that way. Some of you may be out in the next 15 minutes, but if anything, just tune in on the channel. But thank you so much for coming. A last round of applause? Yay! Okay. But before we go, we have, we have questions, please.
How many stickers does everybody get?
Stickers, ooh. We're going to start selling stickers. Okay. Yeah, that's how we, that's how we fix our gaps, sell stickers. So, so we did not set, we didn't, we didn't set a number, but that's why, that's why we just wanted to say, if it means, if you're strong about it, we're going to leave that up to you. So if you really feel strong, strongly about, about a point, objective or goal, get a sticker. But we did not set a number, but great question. Any other questions before we start? Great question, Marlis. Anything else? Yes, sir.
Typically, when you set up objectives, they're measured. Are you entertaining the idea of measure of the goal?
Yes. We, that's, that's, that's what we, we tried to do with these. Each goal, and I, and I guess what I would say is, as you attend each table, if you don't see that there, there isn't a, if, if it's, if there's no measurement to it, you could help, you know, on a posted note and maybe share some suggestions you have to, to add some measurement to that. So thank you. John?
So maybe just as a suggestion, because I know you have a lot of passionate people that I grabbed 50 pieces of stickers and put them all on the bottom of the goal, and so maybe you want to consider.
Ooh. All right. He's city council, so we got to put a limit. I see some people putting in their pockets already. Dana, can we put a limit on stickers? We're out. We're selling them now, because we're out, all right? So supply and demand. Okay, you got it. From the top. It's from the top. I got, we got to, we got to limit it. So limit to how many? What, what, just, is there?
One.
One?
One.
One is the referred objective or goal.
One, all right. There we go. One per, one per table, one green and one red per table?
No.
Per objective.
Oh, per objective. Oh, gotcha. Oh, we're talking about per objective, okay.
Per objective, per.
Oh, gotcha. Yeah. Yeah. Was that not self-explanatory? Oh, okay. No, some people, oh wow, they were really putting 20 on one objective. Okay. All right. Any other questions? These are great questions. Yes, sir.
Stickers, they supposed to go here?
No, stickers, great question. So stickers are there and at each table as well. So great question, too. Stickers, the sticker game continues at each table. Yes. Great question. Any other questions? I'm sure you'll have questions throughout. This is going to go till 7:30, 8 o'clock, so feel free to reach out to any of the staff and myself or, or city council members or Mayor Irons, okay?
Refreshments are back.
And refreshments, that's why I came. Yes, they're in the back. Refreshments are here, light refreshments. It's not dinner, but light refreshments. But thank you for your time. Appreciate you.
A little wrap up, so we're coordinating with AGP to get the camera going and then we're going to go over to goal number one, two, three, and four, and then back over to our mission statement and we'll get a wrap up from each one of those tables. So as soon as I get a signal from AGP, we'll start over at goal number one. Stand by. All right, so I'm just going to walk over to goal number one. So this is goal number one. I'm just going to turn the mic over to Councilmember Heading and Craig Smolinger.
Okay. And you can give us an update.
I'll give you an update. I was still engaged in a great conversation, but I'll give you an update. So we had a lot of heated, passionate, good input. One, there appears to be now a great concern and recognition that there's a real issue with regard to future sustainability financially of the city. And that, to me, was very apparent tonight when I talked to people. Folks that came over and voted, obviously, at least the majority I talked to, wanted to know what was going on with the property where Dynegy is and what the development plans are for that and what might be happening in the future with regard to that. There was a lot of good conversation on TOT taxes and people realized that that contributed significantly to the income of the city and how could we raise that. Some of the things mentioned were looking at the possibility of, and I wrote it down, a conference center to attract a different level of tourists, like corporations. It might have people midweek that could come in on our, call it our shoulder season and also midweek when things are slower. We had conversations about people on fixed incomes and the fear of having to raise taxes to pay for general city services. That was mentioned a couple of times. Couple of people brought up the notion about a parking structure. Why would the city consider paid parking? And did that mean we were looking at specifically infrastructure for parking in the future? The answer is yes, we have to. And how do we fund that? And one of the ways is to look at a feasibility study for the possibility of paid parking. Not that we've gone there or decided that, but that's what the goal is. And then we also had folks that were concerned about the zoning, and I, of course, sent them right over to Red's table because that's the appropriate table. But the issue was in terms of revenue, there was a recognition that property taxes contribute significantly to the city and therefore through zoning, and one person mentioned R4, through zoning, there might be the opportunity to increase, quote unquote, "the number of units that pay taxes through property taxes," and that could help the city significantly. So lots of good, passionate input and thanks to everybody that came out and put their green stickers up or red stickers up.
Yeah, thank you. Just want to echo John's comments. Heard a lot of similar comments. Also, a little bit more on cost control and sound fiscal practices. So a little more than just, we need 25% more revenue, but actually looking at our total picture and what we're spending and what we're spending it on and just making sure we're prudent moving forward with cost controls. So, yep.
Thanks. And we're taking the mic over to Marlis and Rob. Goal number two. Rob?
Goal number two is designated as an essential goal, is to complete the water reclamation facility project in our One Water program. And we have quite a few green dots on the objectives here. We did get a few comments about looking at, to see what kind of new tech is available and to bring that information forward. Comment about the, are these objectives really measurable? And I believe that they are because they're short-term objectives and we need to get them accomplished in a short period of time. A comment on state water should be eliminated only if its cost is justifiable. And to use reclaimed water for public parks, parks plant watering, and make it available for public use. Other things that I heard from folks that I talked to is the affordability of the project and making sure that we're doing what's affordable for the community and try to accomplish as many goals as possible, but keep the rates as
A little wrap-up, so we're coordinating with AGP to get the camera going, and then we're going to go over to goal number one, two, three, and four, and then back over to our mission statement, and we'll get a wrap-up from each one of those tables. So as soon as I get a signal from AGP, we'll start over at goal number one. Stand by. All right, so I'm just going to walk over to goal number one. So this is goal number one. I'm just going to turn the mic over to Councilmember Heading and Craig Smoliger, and you can give us an update.
I'll give you an update. I was still engaged in a great conversation, but I'll give you an update. So we had a lot of heated, passionate, good input. One, there appears to be now a great concern and recognition that there's a real issue with regard to future sustainability financially of the city. And that, to me, was very apparent tonight when I talked to people. Folks that came over and voted, obviously, at least the majority I talked to, wanted to know what was going on with the property where Dynegy is, and what the development plans are for that, and what might be happening in the future with regard to that. There was a lot of good conversation on TOT taxes, and people realized that that contributed significantly to the income of the city, and how could we raise that? Some of the things mentioned were looking at the possibility of, and I wrote it down, a conference center to attract a different level of tourists, like corporations. It might have people midweek that could come in on our, call it our shoulder season, and also midweek when things are slower. We had conversations about people on fixed incomes and the fear of having to raise taxes to pay for general city services. That was mentioned a couple of times. Couple of people brought up the notion about a parking structure. Why would the city consider paid parking? And did that mean we were looking at specifically infrastructure for parking in the future? The answer is yes, we have to. And how do we fund that? And one of the ways is to look at a feasibility study for the possibility of paid parking. Not that we've gone there or decided that, but that's what the goal is. And then, we also had folks that were concerned about the zoning, and I, of course, sent them right over to Red's table because that's the appropriate table. But the issue was, in terms of revenue, there was a recognition that property taxes contribute significantly to the city, and therefore, through zoning, and one person mentioned R4, through zoning there might be the opportunity to increase quote-unquote "the number of units that pay taxes" through property taxes, and that could help the city significantly. So lots of good, passionate input, and thanks to everybody that came out and put their green stickers up, or red stickers up.
Yeah, thank you. Just want to echo John's comments. Heard a lot of similar comments. Also, a little bit more on cost control and sound fiscal practices. So a little more than just, we need 25% more revenue, but actually looking at our total picture and what we're spending and what we're spending it on, and just making sure we're prudent moving forward with cost controls. So, yep.
Thanks. And we're taking the mic, the mic over to Marlis and Rob. Goal number two. Rob?
Goal number two is designated as an essential goal, is to complete the water reclamation facility project in our One Water program. And we have quite a few green dots on the objectives here. We did get a few comments about looking at, to see what kind of new tech is available, and to bring that information forward. Comment about the, are these objectives really measurable? And I believe that they are because they're short-term objectives, and we need to get them accomplished in a short period of time. A comment on state water should be eliminated only if its costs justifiable, and to use reclaimed water for public parks, parks plant watering, and make it available for public use. Other things that I heard from folks that I talked to is the affordability of the project, and making sure that the, we're doing what's affordable for the community, and try to accomplish as many goals as possible, but keep the rates as low as they need to be. And I'll turn it over to Marlis to add to that.
I just want to echo that point. I heard that quite a lot. We really do need to be cost-conscious in moving forward with the project. But I also think that everybody recognized that this is something that we absolutely have to do, and we have to do it as quickly as we can, move forward quickly, and that will help to reduce the cost. So a lot of support for that.
Great, thank you. Then coming over to Matt and Rick on goal number three. Either one want to start off?
Well, yes, we had goal number three, which is talking about improving infrastructure and public spaces. Our number one item was talking about a decision to consider building a street improvement tax, and there's a lot of green dots there. And number two was talking about budgeting for and complete planning for rebuilding the city-owned access alley on the dock between the Coast Guard Station and Verges, and again, a lot of green dots. Our third item, when we're talking about a parking, any sort of parking structure, this is where we had a few red dots where people were a bit leery about parking structures. And some of the comments were, should be studied, but costs of operating park and garage need to be considered. Bring back our festivals to the pier parking lot. So people were looking at parking in the city and say, what can we do positively with that? Our next item is talking about bringing a council decision for public-private partnership in terms of market, street plaza development above Centennial Parkway. Again, mostly green dots, but we did have one red dot. And fifth, we're talking about the, complete the approved feasibility study for the marine services/boatyard concept, and we have a number of green dots on that. And if that one is, just comes to anybody's light here at the meeting or watching a TV on Thursday night, the Harbor Board will be talking about this exact item. So again, those were five things, talking about infrastructure. Rick?
I would just add that there was a lot of interest in making sure that as we move forward with our infrastructure improvement, that it is, in fact, commensurate with the revenue stream improvements, and that each one of the objectives that we develop is clearly measurable and has a very specific timeline to it.
Rhett Davis and Cindy?
Hi. Our goal was general plan and land use. And the number one concern is about housing and rental affordability. But going, supplying, perhaps adopting more dense zoning areas in order to increase our stock of housing. But there was also some concern about regulating vacation rentals in residential areas, and that is something that G-PAC, the General Plan Advisory Committee, will be taking up shortly. Number two concern was about our code enforcement ordinance, and that is in the works. It should come back to council within the next couple of months for further public comment and input. And that concerns primarily parking of boats and RVs on private property. Number three discussion area was future use of the existing water, wastewater treatment plant, which is between the high school and the creek. And there was one comment about my favorite use, which is to build a medical center there. And the fourth area of discussion was preserving the hillsides, the Chevron property in particular, and be sure that we consider carefully how we, how that area may be zoned in the future if the city takes an active interest in the property.
Thanks, Rhett. That's an excellent summary. I would echo that. We did get quite a few comments on affordable housing and the need for more workforce housing. We also got a lot of good questions about what does affordable housing mean, what does that look like, what is the city doing to promote affordable housing? And so there was a lot of extended conversations about that. And, but essentially, we got all greens, we got no reds. Everyone said, just do it, update the general plan and local coastal plan. So that was great to hear.
Great, thank you, guys. And then on to the mission statement. I think I'm looking at Eric Endersby. So thanks, Eric, for taking this on. Everybody's kind of shifting like, oh, no, the mic's coming over here, the camera's coming over here. All right, Eric, thanks. This is a great one.
I'm not contagious. So most of our time was spent handing out red and green dots. The path was not beaten very hard to our doorstep here, but we did get a couple of comments. Most of, I think Craig and Steve, he had to go leave on an incident, but most of our time was spent answering questions on a lot of these other ones over here from the community. But mission statement, I've got five, six dots of support. The only real comment I heard was make sure you, ensure you include social service-type things in your mission statement, that that's highlighted in there, and we're not forgetting that. Otherwise, everybody's pretty happy with our mission statement. Any more? Okay.
So, Connie, you want to help with this? Want to tag-team this one? So we've got all these dots up here. Is that what you want to do? Okay. So, all right, good. So we've got all these dots and different, we've got pink, blue, yellow, green, and...
Let's take out the popular ones first. Let's see, this...
So I'll hand you the mic. Connie, I think you, this would be great.
No. Okay, all right. So we just, part of the mission statement, we have a very colorful wall. This was the most, one of the more popular corners of the hall today. But we just wanted to show the ones that stood out. It seems like, if I'm missing anything, this is one of the more popular ones. And so I'll name a few support, supports bike connections to Cayucus and Los Osos, green, very green. Provide bike racks at each city park and near beach parking, very popular. And then we have a note, promote bike rack donation program. Another popular one was also preserve parks, facilities, and open space. What's another popular one? Am I missing anything? Another green one right, oh, here we go. Repair and improve residential streets in North Morro Bay. Ironwood, Avalon, Alena, Greenwood, Apollo, Fur. Okay, round of applause. There we go. All right, that's good. Another one that stands out, green, maybe this. Develop comprehensive plan to improve residential streets. Can you zoom into this one? No, that's a joke. There's the bad word on there. Don't zoom into that, AGP. But basically, just pave my streets, is what he says. Okay? Is there another one? Is this, this, okay. Encourage dialogue between police, homeless, and fearful residents. Okay? And this one, develop long-term plan to solve the homeless problem in Morro Bay. We feel like I showed all the green ones. Now we'll go to the red. I'm sorry if I missed anything, but here's a red one. Red means strongly against. Forty-foot Ferris wheel at the rock. Creative idea, but somebody wants a zip line, and they put one green dot next, next to Ferris.
Two people.
Two people, two people, two people. Okay. What's another red?
The blue one, I guess, yeah.
Oh. Develop long-term parking solutions for high demand central corridor, paid parking, annual permits for residents. So no on that. Okay, we have a few red dots on that. Strongly opposed.
Conference center.
Conference center to accommodate up to 500 peeper, people. We got, we got two, two greens, but, you know, roughly about eight, eight red dots right there. So it's kind of, we got...
That's actually 12.
12? Wow, someone's been counting. Okay, all right, sorry, geez. That's good. All right, so no conference center. Got it. Yeah.
How about here at the end, the people with the red, all the reds, keep coming, keep coming.
The paid parking on Embarcadero.
Excellent performance.
That one's good, yeah.
Establish paid parking on Embarcadero after one hour, like slow.
That was a no.
That's a no. Okay, perfect. Green one right here. Consider a cruise ship to stop in Morro Bay. A lot of red dots right there. All right, any, anything else?
Speed bumps is a no.
Speed bumps? Okay, no on speed bumps? Sure it's somewhere. I'll encourage use of speed bumps on Laurel Avenue and other areas. That's a no.
The roundabout on Beach and Embarcadero was a no.
The roundabout? Let me just move over here. Let's go, Sarah Hart.
Right here, right here. These ones. Right here, this one, this one, that one, and that one. You want me to read them? Okay. So build a barrier between Main Street and Highway One. That's got a lot of red ones, a lot of no's. Implement paid parking to fund street repairs. There's a lot of no's on that one. Add a roundabout at Beach Street and Embarcadero. There's a lot of no's on that one. And bridge arched walkway over the bay to the sand spit. I'm the only one who voted yes on that.
Thank you, Sarah. I appreciate that. This is good. I like it. Well, thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that.
So are we wrapping up, then? Okay, so we got, we got a wrap-up on all the goals, the mission statement, and then I was kind of floating around, so I had the opportunity to talk with some folks, too. Had a lot of good feedback from folks that really liked this exercise. They appreciated coming out, being able to be interactive on whether or not it was goal, a goal one, or goal two, or mission statement, just the process of having the interaction. So there's a lot of good feedback on that. So I think we can take away that we want to be able to do this in the future. And with that, we don't have any more updates. We had great participation. We want to thank everybody for being here tonight, all our staff and council members for being here, and of course, all our community members that came, took the time to come out. And one question, Connie, so how is this all going to be distilled down? Are we going to be posting some of this? Is this going to come back to council when we start doing this? Is any of this going to be ready, regular, available on our website? What do you, what do you know about that?
Great question, Mayor. Dana Swanson, our city clerk, city recorder, has all the answers. So I'll let her take that.
Okay, so staff is meeting tomorrow to synthesize all of the great input that we received today. We'll put that together. It will be in a staff report and brought to council for discussion at the regular meeting on February 14th. So if you have no Valentine's Day plans, join us.
All right, thank you, Dana. Thanks, Connie. And with that, we'll adjourn this meeting and kind of the formality part, but really just want to say thanks for everybody coming out tonight. Appreciate it. All right, good night.